Oh, no, I'm in it. I'm looking at the journal entries, I'm sorry. I think it's under HR. Maybe HR is not on the resolution.
I do remember seeing that.
No, it was in our packet.
Yeah, there's a diagram and everything with it, too.
So is this an add-on, Amy?
What are you looking at?
For the WIC.
What was the resolution number before? I can't find it. I did see it in my packet. There's a...
I don't think it...
An organizational chart with it also.
It's probably under HR discussions.
It's number seventeen.
Seventeen?
Where's my seventeen on our thing? I only have sixteen.
Yeah.
Maybe she's bringing it?
No, it was in our packet, because I saw it.
Yeah.
And I saw it.
Because it was highlighted, and I thought the thing they added was a part about how Health Department had been awarded.
Right.
And just so they knew that WIC wasn't going to stop.
We can clarify when she comes in.
Probably it was under Janet's section at HR. It is probably under the packet.
Well, you know what? It was Executive Section, G1, personnel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll recess to solid waste. Okay, solid waste isn't until nine, we have domestic.
Oh, that's right.
First, yeah.
Oh, nothing. That's right.
Is Joanne should call up here?
I didn't see her.
No, she doesn't hear me right now, here. We're gonna be a hot mess today with all these cats and pigeons.
Did you evacuate?
Yes. Well, we left before. It was at noon, but we left before that. So I got home late Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Did you drive down?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Crazy train to get out.
Pardon me? She must be en route, because we can't get her all come, so...
Look who I brought with me. Hey, Pardon me?
Good morning.
Good morning.
She's the time of year.
This is just a little comparison sheet. I kind of make this every year for you. It's just kind of a dumb... Oh, I'm sorry. You're done. Very welcome. It's just kind of a snapshot on one page. So, kind of a comparison from last year. I guess I got a quick look before I dive in. Couldn't figure out how to do footnotes in Excel, sorry. So I'm kind of cheating with the small if on. It sounds good. Oh, really? Okay, let me get that number from again. Is that for the till the end of the year? Okay.
Yeah, the big thing is that computers, isn't it?
It is, but there's actually a perk to funding that through our budget. So I'll let everybody kind of... I'll wait for the heads-up sign to dive in, like I said. Good?
Yeah.
Good? I thought it always helps me to look back at history to plan for the future, kind of see where we came from, where we were going to go to. And so I try to look where we were last year and what we've accomplished and what we've done. In regard to salaries, my salary is no change. My salary's set by statute, so it is what it is. And it's not changed, I think, forever. And I mean, like, even from Judge Haynes, just by the same...
Really? Wow.
For the county portion of it, plus the state.
Yeah, right, right.
So I am asking for a 5% increase on, for my employees. You all know what you've done for employees of the county. It has been less than 3% for a long time. So I am asking for a 5% increase. That will not even bring folks back up to an annual 3% over at least the last five years. Those folks have lost that contribution for OPERs forever. There's just no way to make it up. But I do think it is appropriate to move people. 5%, I am asking for that. With that, it will come with corresponding increases with OPERs, Medicare, and workers' comp. For my entire staff, the 5% increase over the current budget, and I hate to use "is" only, because $24,000 is a lot of money, but that, in the grand scheme of life, $24,000, I would hope would not be instrumental.
How many people are we talking about, Paul?
There are nine staff members. There are nine staff members, but one of my staff members is paid from my own fund, so this is eight individuals.
Okay.
This is eight individuals. At least currently, that person is a part-time employee and paid by a fund that I have. So this is full-time. That'd be eight people. Health benefits is also a very big issue for me. From our request last year, I have been and am, well, I have been, and as of last month, I have been running in the deficit $9,000. And, right, it just was not funded to the extent that our coverage required. We have had three individuals, two individuals, and then one coming on board who have shifted, if you will, from family to spouse, spouse to whatever, back and forth. So in the last couple of months, month or two, probably just in the month...
Yeah.
Last month.
Last month.
Last month. Their change in coverage has made what was a $9,000 deficit grow. So by the end of the year, the deficit, it will be $16,175.42. And that will be for this year. So when we put in the request for 2020, that, we had originally anticipated 138, 112. With the changes in people's coverage to family coverage, basically, that number will increase to 162. So I did want to bring that to your attention. That's a sizable jump, but that's something I...
Well, that's something we have no control over, though.
Exactly. Exactly. But I really would appreciate if I could be funded this year, so I'm not running in the red. And then next year will be 162, 949.17. The rest of the changes, you know, I'm looking all the way down through the bulk of my budget until I get to equipment. And the grand total of what I'm asking for is about $3,000 or $4,000. Two, three, four, $5,000 in my entire budget. I am asking for an increase in training of $1,000. I have a new magistrate coming on, and then individual importance in training, sadly. And I, perhaps I'm the only individual who liked the county car. I loved that little county car. I did. I really loved the little county car.
Was it one of those that you had to put your feet up and make it go like this?
Almost. It was a little work focused. I'm going to tell you what, I had no problem with that little, little bug. I loved him. And I sadly miss having the county car. I prefer not to take my own personal vehicle. And so I've been working really hard. I think Todd and Joanne have both been wonderful in working with us to try to get whatever the connection is that you all have at Enterprise. So I'm going to be floating my first test run next week. See how that goes. So I am asking for an increase in my travel line to about $1,750. If you wonder how I got that number, let me tell you what I really am I did. We sat down and looked at different meetings, different conferences, how many days, where they are. And then we looked up the mileage to all the places and tried to compute with how many miles and how much, how many dollars per trip. So I don't say that to impress you, but I kind of do, because...
There's a method to the madness.
There's a method to the madness. And I don't pluck numbers out of the air for anything. I don't randomly ask for money just because if I'm going to ask for an increase, there's a reason, there's a basis, and I at least try to give you some background on why I think that number's appropriate. We have asked also for modest increases in telephone. I did not ask for an increase in postage, even though, quite frankly, postage has gone up. So between the telephone and the postage, to me, those, they're in the same bracket, if you will. And $250 is pretty modest. Materials and supplies, I did ask for an increase in. Typically speaking, we have spent our materials and supplies. We've gotten a new machine, if you will. It produces an ID card for individuals who get civil protection orders. And so we actually give them for the petitioner, the alleged victim of domestic violence, and we give them also to the respondent. And let me tell you why. So the petitioner is pretty clear. They have a card. It tells police. It's a little card they can keep in their wallet versus a five-page piece of packet of papers to keep in your glove box or your pocketbook. And it basically identifies what the restrictions are against the respondent, who's protected. And many times, the police want to see some sort of paperwork to know that there's actually a CPO in fact. The card is something for convenience purposes and also for law enforcement purposes. They can find the folks a little bit easier, because all of the identifying information is right there on the card. You're not asking the petitioner to remember some vital piece of information that police need to put into the system. On the flip side of that, we've got a lot of families coming through with civil protection orders where a father may have some parenting time, or a mother may have parenting time with a child as an exception to the civil protection order. Well, if one party says, there's a civil protection order, this person's not allowed around...
Then the other person has...
The other person, in all fairness, should be able to say, that's true, with the exception of my parenting time.
And we've...
Put all of that on the card. So both individuals get civil protection order cards. There is an expense to that. It's not huge, but that's an extra supply item for us. And I will tell you, our civil protection filings are really going up. And I will also tell you, as you may also know, Aisha's law carried with it a potential provision of domestic relations courts staying open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so that we can hear civil protection order applications.
Do you need any sleep?
Well, it doesn't just affect us. If it had passed, or if it's some other form, it does pass, it will affect DR budget, clerk budget, sheriff's budget.
Oh.
It is a domino effect. So it did not pass. Everyone's really working together to come up with some solution that is feasible. An unfunded mandate's not going to work. So I do let you know that the CPOs are on the rise, though. Photocopy expenses, we do anticipate that going up very, very slightly. And then the biggest ticket item is the replacement of our 11 computers and monitors. Now, I want to tell you that this does not include my three courtroom computers. Those are laptops. I would anticipate that that, if not done next year, I'm trying to hold off, but it will be a 2021 item. I know Lloyd is trying to figure out a way to address everybody's IT needs, and he does a great job. This is a general fund item, but the benefit of running, oops, excuse me. I'll show you the eye. The benefit of running our equipment cost through the DR budget is that we can get some money back to the general fund for 4D contract. Our 4D contract, if it includes this expense item, will also result in a contribution of federal dollars back to the general fund, so...
Judge, when is the 4D contract?
It runs, it's like July 1st to June 30th.
Okay.
But, I mean, 4D, what does that mean, or... It's federal funding dollars. We sit down with CSEA, or I'm sorry, yeah, CSEA, and this is actually a really, really large contract. But we sit down and based upon our budget and the number of hours that the magistrates spend and our staff spend working on child support cases, the federal government does a reimbursement with federal dollars. That does not come to my budget, that comes to the general fund. So just the expense for the computers is the expense for the computers, but by shifting it from one budget to the other...
Gets money back.
Right. And to be honest with you, I'm sure Judge Berger will tell you the same thing, the same rule would probably apply to juvenile court. Not probably, but juvenile court, because they deal with child support issues. It's solely child support issues that are billable under 4D. So anytime, any case comes through, time is devoted to the case, and it's based upon time and staff hours. That's how the 4D contribution is based.
Thank you.
Yep.
Judge, I thought we were doing this this year.
The computers? Who's going to pay for it?
It's already set aside. So I can approve it. I thought you guys had a...
For nineteen, you're saying, Todd? For nineteen?
No, we don't have the money for it. We got a quote for it to include it in this year's budget. If Lloyd's got the money, that's perfect, but I...
These were being done this year.
I talked to Lloyd, and he didn't seem to end up geasy.
I talked to Lloyd.
Okay, well, Lloyd said that it was, if I want, because mine is like, hit the button, go get a cup of coffee, come back. So I had called him, and he's like, yeah, you might want to ask for it in your budget.
My understanding is this is being done this year, but I'll double check.
Out of his budget?
Well, it's going to run through yours, but...
Well, it can't run through mine if I didn't get it.
Where's the money?
Yeah.
Where's the money right now?
I would swear that three weeks ago, we put it in their budget, but...
In my IT budget? In my, wait, in my budget? Well, I can tell you that we printed this out at...
I'll double check that.
What?
In my, I don't know, Lloyd's, I can't remember.
At 15:35, which is...
And actually, to be honest, it may be on hold while they worked on their policies. I'll have to double check all my notes, but I'm pretty sure these computers get...
So it wasn't in there yesterday?
So, but I think you're right. I think it went to IT. We funded IT to order it.
Now, will that affect the money coming back, Paula? I mean, does it need to be put in your budget first?
Well, I will tell you, at the bottom of this page where it says revenue, and my re-anticipated revenue for 2020 was $79,000. Part of the reason that there's a jump up in the revenue is because $22,000 of expense for computers was included in my 2020 4D contract. So if the $22,000 is not put into my budget, it doesn't go through to the 4D budget, which means my revenue will not be $79,000.
And that means we would probably have to do, if we wanted to get 4D, we would have to do an amended...
Well, since that contract runs from July 1st of 2019...
So it would be part of it.
It would still be okay, but it needs to hit our budget. It's July, it's, sorry, July 1st.
Through June 30th.
So as long as I get the money in that period...
Right.
My contract would stay intact. But if it doesn't run through my budget, it all won't reach Paul.
Well, we wanted to run through your budget, not these things.
Right. So, yeah, too bad, too bad nobody told me that. Because we put the $22,000 request in back in our budget in, what, May? When we sent our tax budget through? So, in the event, so we've talked a little bit about the health insurance expense. I did want to alert you to that, the county car, the increased revenue. I do see a need for three laptops for my courtrooms right now. I've gone wood. Those are running okay. If the flip comes up on the screen, it will be an emergency, though, because I do have digital recording in the courtrooms. That's our recording system, but right now, they seem to be okay. They are four years old. They'll be five shortly, so... That's kind of getting a nutshell.
Okay.
Very nice.
Well, is I, can I ask on the equipment? Todd, so that allocation was done in the December 2019 budget, or...
For computers?
Domestic court, yeah.
No.
Or you saw, I mean, it came through under tax budget?
Probably through...
Look, we've been, we've been waiting for IT to give us the computer list for some time.
Replacement plan.
The 2019 program had $50,000 set aside for it, none of which has been spent yet, in part because they don't have their list ready. In the meantime, I had thought Judge Gillette called Janet, indicating your poor performance across the board. IT went out to see if there was anything they could do. They came back with the recommendation that the computers are all just going to need replaced, that they've tried all their little tricks and whatnots to get them to work. And so I know I came to the board and asked if you'd be willing to do at least Judge Gillette's this year. We were working with Lloyd at the time, because he is working on a overall policy on how computers are to be moved between departments and all that type of stuff. And I know that he was still working on it at the time that request came. My understanding was, from my last conversation with him, was that we were still going to proceed with Judge Gillette's this year before the policies approved, but then everyone else will fall under the new policies right where, but the new program for how computers will be replaced. So my understanding was, her courtroom was going to be done, but I'll double check with Lloyd to see if that was put on hold or something.
When I talked with Lloyd, Lloyd said, I can give you, I can give you me, just me alone, a refurbished one. And I said, jeez, I mean, I'd rather have my office, because I'm, I'm getting older, so I don't remember who got what done when. I think the idea, I said, Todd, this was your idea from a gazillion years ago. It was a great idea to set up a rotating schedule so that all, like, your agency is done every four years starting 2019, yours is done every four years starting 2020. So it's not one big pot.
Exactly.
Right, it's a rotating schedule. And I don't know how far down the way that got. So I told Lloyd, I'm going to put this in my, request in my budget, so, you know, if I have to wait till 2020, I, I mean, I'll stumble along by. There's no need to give me a refurbished one to put all the programming in, and then next year, do, it's a lot of labor for no need. And so I was not under the impression that I was going to get funded. And quite frankly, although IT did come out and look and probably sees that we need updated, no one's contacted us about what our computer or monitor needs would be, so I would be surprised if any money got dumped anywhere, because how do they know what the cost is going to be if they've not contacted us to see what our needs are?
We got a quote?
Well, how did you get a... All right, so I said $22,000...
It's all on hold again.
The $22,000 estimate?
Yeah.
Lloyd would have had that.
Was based upon a quote that it was for a generic computer and monitors, right? Just so that we had some amount of money to request. They got us the quote, but it was, you know, round dollars. And then usually by shopping around, by the time you shop around, you can shave a little bit off, so...
Well, follow up, it may be that in further conversations, it was decided to delay it, and I just wasn't in on the loop, but I do know you're the next on the list, at least as far as I've heard.
And if the next on the list is January, and, you know, you put the money in the account, I'm okay with that. That's, I mean, you know...
But according to you, Judge, in order to get that 4D money, the grant money, we have to fund it through your budget?
Right.
Not IT's?
Well, what, yeah, it always ends up in the department budgets. Sometimes the initial purchase, let's say it's for 50 computers, for simplicity, goes to IT and then is charged as they deliver the computers...
I don't think that's...
To the, to the areas. But we'll get our work, and so we get the reimbursement.
I don't know that, I don't know, because part of our 4D contract is also like utilities and stuffs.
Yeah, but that's, that's the general thing that they just...
It's a different thing.
That's a whole different thing.
I think it has to be in...
I think it has to be...
Not discharged back.
It has to be in our budget, because we actually have to expense that out on that expense form.
That's what I thought I was hearing, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Todd?
It's not an issue. We'll get it out, I'll just figure out where we're at. I thought we were already proceeding with domestic court. That's why surprise won't show up until 2020.
There's good news. Let's hope it's true.
Well, follow up.
What else? What other questions to ask?
As always, you always give us such good details and explanations. We should teach lessons to others. But no, I, I don't have any questions, Paula. You always do a good job.
Did you get all the items from last year? You were talking, a new scheduling software. I know you got the CPO cards.
We've got, we've got the, we've got the benefits of everything that I think we had talked about. We've got, actually, our carpet, thank you, is going to get installed in October. We're very excited about that. And then, yeah, I think, I think we're pretty well on track for the items that we talked about. We didn't have anything big on the plate for, the computers were the big thing for 2020, try to just take small chunks at a time.
But everything for '19 that you even wanted us getting done are done.
Yeah.
Nothing excluded.
I think so.
Right, so we, you know, we're still working on a couple of the projects, but logistically, I think that we're going to get there. Yep. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paula. Any questions? Have a great day.
Hey, you, too.
We will now recess to solid waste. I need a motion to approve consent agenda.
Should we recess for a couple of hours? It's not nine o'clock yet.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Pause for the class?
Welcome back, students.
Thank you. Glad to be back.
I'll go see if I can get out of the light real quick.
Yeah, see where that money is.
That wouldn't be good, because we do need to stagger those replacements, or we're going to be right back where we were. She always does a good job.
It's a common misconception that computers get slower when they get older. What happens is we get faster, and it just seems slow. We're always getting faster.
And then they kind of went to, ooh, for X amount of dollars, we can give you faster internet speed. But I'm not moving faster. I may have to reboot myself.
I might have to reboot myself.
Okay, we recessed the solid waste, I need a motion to approve consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, we'll call in.
Green. Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Nikki.
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn, solid waste.
Second, we'll call in.
Green.
Yes.
Yes, we will reconvene to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which you are up now.
First item on my agenda, um, I just wanted to follow up from last week regarding the life insurance that we were filing. Last week I had mentioned that we were having issues with two of our vendors, one of them being Allstate Life. And then, you know, proposed to bring it on Washington National. And so Commissioner Clyde had questions about opening it up to possible bid. So I really wanted Susan to come forward and kind of explain.
So I'll just talk about, I'll try to make it as, um, you know, compact as possible. Uh, previously, when I first came to Portage County, and this will be my eighth open enrollment going into, uh, we had a man by the name of Jim Bangildon, who sold office policies here. So he was an insurance agent that sold all different types of company policies. How he came to be with Portage County, I don't know, he'd been here for years. I think he originally started managing at dental plan or something. So what he would do is he would go with me to every open enrollment meeting. He would approach every individual trying to sell them policies. He would give a spiel, you know, at every meeting. So me sitting back and looking at that, I'm like, oh, this doesn't seem right to me, you know? Even though he was a lot of help to me during opening meetings, you know? So it was kind of like cutting my nose off to spite my face. But I did stop him from doing that because I didn't feel it was right for him to pressure sale to the individuals. So, that being said, um, I eventually got it to where, you know, I would set him up a room during open enrollment. I would announce his hours that he was there. And if individuals wanted to go purchase a policy from him, they could. It was totally, you know, optional, which is what this policy, these policies are. So we would arrange to do payroll deductions for them only. So any problems with the policy, you know, somebody would come to me and say, you know, there's something wrong with my policy, I didn't get my policy, why are they charging me this? I would call Jim and say, here's an issue, take care of it, and he would immediately. Well, last open enrollment, he passed away during the open enrollment process. So he had somebody here, you know, on his behalf, and there were a lot of issues that happened with the policies. And the employee comes to me and, you know, they go over to me like I'm the, the person responsible. And I tried to help them a- as much as I could. I had, um, lack of the better word, just very poor response from UNOM and Allstate, who are the two companies. And I understand that because they didn't sell us the policies either. You know, this was made by an individual person. So, um, we had, uh, brought Aflac in a few years ago to sell cancer policy. And that was one reason because I knew that Jim Bangildon was in poor health. And I wanted to have another, another vendor to fall back on if this situation happened. So, you know, this, this has happened. So in, in the process, and I knew that I reached out to, to Allstate and I reached out to UNOM, or the two policies that Jim Bangildon sold, and asked them, do they have a representative? Because we already had everything in place that could come meet with my employees during open enrollment. No response, no response whatsoever from Allstate. And I, the problems that I had with UNOM on several different occasions, it was weeks, weeks before I could get anybody to reach out to our employees. I mean, I can show you the emails I had meeting with them. They offered to come in during open enrollment, but they wanted to meet with each individual person. That was the only way they would give us, you know, any kind of a good, good price. So I already had that experience. I also tried to reach out to Colonial Life. Two years ago, Opers had promoted them, uh, as giving a whole statewide, uh, price reduction, you know, because of the big group. Uh, we went through the auditor's office, had that set up, I was ready for them to do open enrollment, no response. They wouldn't call me back, they wouldn't sit up many times. Well, they eventually, you know, apologized for that and, you know, they were sorry, but, you know, it's too, it's too late. Also spoke with, uh, New York Life. Uh, they had a good product, but they are not local. Uh, they are, um, three states away and he may come once or twice, uh, a year to check on things. Um, Washington National and Aflac both have constantly kept in touch with me, you know, if there was ever any need, anything like that. And their policies and their prices are reasonable. Now, um, Kathy, you had some questions about should we go out to bid? And I think that's perfectly legitimate. I mean, I think it's perfectly legitimate for you all to even ask why I have chosen these people because we want to make sure that they're not my brother or my ex-wife or whatever coming in to sell these policies. Um, but because Portage County doesn't pay any portion of these policies, in my opinion, are not. Yes, we do not have to go out to bid. Now, some employers do offer a life insurance policy where the employer pays a portion and you get your salary or that type of thing. That would be Portage County funds, then you would need to go out to bid for that. But these are the same policies, they do not give any type of a different discount. It's the same policy that I could go to an Aflac representative on my own and get it. All we're doing is offering a payroll deduction. The most ideal thing would be not to have any payroll deductions because that would make my life a whole lot easier. But I do feel that we need, do need to offer at least some minimal payroll, payroll deductions for optional insurances because some people, you know, they come in, they re, they look to us and rely on us to say, hey, you know, I need a short-term disability policy. Or maybe, you know, a young employee might want to start off with a, a life insurance policy or, you know, that type of thing. So I feel like we need to offer something as far as how you all would like to go about doing that. You know, I'm, I'm fine with anything. But I have looked myself for the best policy with the best customer service, which is really what I'm looking for. Because life insurance policies are important, they might vary completely since the policy, you know, they, they change them up. You know, you might get fifteen thousand for this much money, or you can get ten thousand for this much money, or, you know, it pays out in fifteen years or thirty years. There's so many different variables. But what I'm looking for is when an employee comes to me and says, why did I get this refund check in the mail? Is my policy canceled? I want to call somebody and I want them to call me back that day.
A person.
Not a real person who's gonna contact that employee and not wait three or four weeks. Because they look at me like it, I'm responsible, you know? And I'm not, and I do feel somewhat responsible.
Sure.
Because I am the face of, of what, what they have. I am the only person for them to go to. So that was why, uh, Aflac, and I will tell you, you know, Aflac is already in and set up as a vendor as the cancer policy. Um, that was one reason why I chose them for the, um, short-term disability because they do have a policy, they work very well with me. And their life insurance policy is also good. But I also don't want to give everything to one vendor because of the competition.
Sure.
It is good.
It's good, yeah.
And, and, and also, you know, we could have five life insurance vendors, but all that does is really messes, you know? People don't know where to go, who to go to, and then we have thirty here and thirty here and thirty here, and then I have, you know, twenty different vendors. But we'll do whatever that you all want to do. All I'm trying to do is streamline it and make it a little more convenient for the employees.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yep.
Did you guys check with the prosecutor or, um, Joey Ann about?
We did, we checked with Chris and, and Joey Ann.
Any need to bid or have a, a process of any kind?
We're still, I mean, Chris did respond and actually Susan covered it, you know?
It's more, so it, we were using Portage County's funds. So we can.
Has to do it.
With Willis. With medical insurance.
And I checked with Willis, our consultant, and he said that we certainly could go out to bid if we wanted to. They would review those and put those all in a nice little compact thing, which I would like to remind you, it would still be then up to us to pick which one of those, you know, like we're doing now. But he said that that is not part of his contract, so there would be.
It'd be extra charge.
I was just gonna ask, that, there's an extra charge for that?
Yeah.
So the prosecutor definitively said it's not required to do that?
He was more or less talking about if, if it's our funds, funding the insurance.
Cause then.
Yeah, it's not.
The last email from Chris is asking from us, like, to detail the process. Like, what, what do we go through? Like, just what Susan just said, what do we go through?
Which I, which I, I responded to that.
Yeah, and we just did that this morning, so.
I mean, as long as they sign, I would like them to sign off, and then it sounds like this is fine. And I appreciate your expertise in your vetting.
Well, I appreciate you asking, because I do agree, and I see how it could look a little gray, you know, because I have, we've had a past commissioner come in and want to sell policies. And we absolutely said no, because, just because of the person, you know, individuals would feel like they were obligated to purchase their products. So I try to stay away from that at all, and that's one reason, like, like even, um, Aflac, for instance, and I like Aflac. Aflac's a great company, we have their, um, you know, their cancer policy. They've offered to help me do open enrollment with every individual. We have a nice online program and we'll set up and we'll have people come in. And that's so that they can have each individual person, so they can pressure sell them. That, I'm not gonna have.
And you know, I think the key here too, though, is that the customer service when you need it. I mean, those, those type of policies, you need someone that's gonna respond.
Some today, you know?
Cause like you said, even though it's optional, it's not something that, that we necessarily are given. We just give it to them as an option if they wanna get. Like you said, they still come to you as the benefit specialist, if there's an issue.
Right, and that makes it hard, yes, and, and I want to be able to help them in any way, but I can't, so, yeah.
So I'm okay with that, I just would like, my okay is conditional on if a prosecutor signing off.
If, if it's.
And it sounds like we'll get there, but let's wait another week on that, yeah.
Cause I'm sure Chris will probably respond once he reads, you know, our emails, he will, he'll respond.
Is your timing okay, like, can this wait until next week's meeting?
Well, I mean, currently, we probably, if we went out to bid, it would be too late for open enrollment. But like I said, I'm okay with not offering me optional insurance.
I hope not.
But, you know, the main thing is.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that, I don't either.
Because we don't, yeah, well.
Cause some people rely on it.
They, they rely on it.
Now, I do recall when you were in here last time, there were certain companies that we were no longer gonna offer payroll deductions from because there was.
Well, we're still gonna have a payroll deduction through UNOM. We're only gonna top stock two of their policies that only pay thirty-five and forty people.
It's the, yeah, critical, critical illness.
Critical illness and accident. So we're still gonna off, we're still gonna keep the payroll deduction that we currently have for short-term through UNOM. I would prefer to get rid of that because I don't want to have to deal with UNOM at all, but we do have a lot of people that have those policies, so I don't want to disrupt that. So we'll let that phase out, is what we'll do.
And then the other one is Great Life.
And then the, the Southern, Great Southern Life, which is really not even called that yet, where there's only a few, a handful of people that still have that. And that policy hasn't been sold payroll since before me, so.
Okay.
So those we're gonna, and we're gonna allow everybody ample time to arrange for their own payroll deduction if they want to keep that policy. And then moving forward, it would be, uh, you know, my proposal is to go with Washington National for life and then Aflac for short-term.
So instead of having like the auditor's office take it out, they would just do like a payroll deduction or a checking account deduction?
Yes, they, or a check-out deduction.
So it's just legit.
Three months.
But it'll still, okay.
They can still keep that policy if they want to.
Yeah, the policy will be terminated.
Yeah, the policy won't be stopped.
So, no, that was a concern for me, cause, I mean, people, like the convenience of it, plus it's like, it's done before they even see their money.
Well, and I will tell you too, when the letters go after those people, if I get a lot of kickback on it, I'll say, you know, maybe we'll reconsider doing that. You know, as long as the auditor's okay with that, because a lot of it has to do with the space that the auditor has for payroll deductions.
Yeah.
They don't want twenty.
Twenty-five different lines.
Thank you so much. And the second item on my agenda is the January through June twenty eighteen vote, turn over report. Again, there really wasn't anything that stuck out, and you can see from the memo where our turnover percentage for that time period was five point five percent, with nineteen employees resigning from January to end of June. Um, it is less than we had last year for the same period. Last year we had twenty-three employees resign, and that was six point five percent turnover. But the one thing that you could probably tell from the, from the graphs, um, it does appear that there's a unspecified category that's higher than the rest of the categories, um, that, that, that has been higher than it has been in the, in the past, past couple of years. And really that category is kind of like a, if there's no reason, specific reason given by the employees, it's kind of like a.
Catch-all.
Yeah, catch-all kind of category, like, you know, and, but this could be employees that really don't give a reason. They just literally show up for work and resign. Or they possibly, they could possibly see termination in the future and they resign and leave termination. Um, or people just, they don't meet with us for whatever reason, so we don't know the reason why they're resigning. So that, yeah, like, like Sabrina said, the unspecified is kind of like a catch-all category. Um, the unspecified category is higher this time, really because we, we did have four, I'm sorry, five people, um, resigned and they had possible termination, they saw something in their future, and they ended up resigning instead of just went to the termination process. So that is, that's actually higher than what we had last year. This year we had five, five people, last year we had two people resign.
Does it say seven on here or am I reading that wrong?
It is, it's seven, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we had, um, five people resign and leave termination, and we had two not meet with HR. They chose not to meet with us for whatever reason.
Is that a category we track, resign and leave, uh, termination? Or is this just your?
I, I track it in unspecified, but I know who did it. I mean, I know. So I, I, cause I have, I have detailed, so I know who, cause we do exit interviews. So I know, you know, plus what the actor saying, someone resigned and left termination, I know that. So I, I.
We should be careful with how we track that because if you're offering somebody the opportunity to resign and leave termination for their own benefit, we shouldn't have a way of, well, actually, they were, you know, we have a record of they were about to be fired.
Well, we would, because it would be disciplinary action to that, to that point.
Yeah, we have to have it tracked.
To that point, so we would, we would have that, we would have that.
But you don't always have a record of discipline, I would think. Some, often you would, but.
Unless it's something like, somebody is really bad and they wouldn't have any personal.
I mean, I remember some of these cases, and I do remember there were discipline issues, but it's just something that it just seems like a category that could have some stigma, that the whole point of that opportunity is to, could be to avoid that. So I, I, I don't want to create some type of category that really does the same thing.
Yeah, but that's, that's why it's under unspecified, isn't it? Yeah, it's weird.
You really, you really don't know. I know.
Brings them out.
Yeah, but we don't, we just don't assess that.
And you don't, you don't know who, I do, but you don't know who.
The shocking one, which I'm glad to see, is that we only lost one employee for salary, so.
Yes, that's a goodness for last year, cause last year we actually had, um, last year we had five people during the same time frame last year.
Yeah, so.
Designed for salary, and this year we had one. So yes, that's a, that's a good point. Um, and for some. And for some reason, we had six people retire last year and this, this year we had three, so.
And this is out of how many employees?
About three hundred and fifty.
Okay. It's just our employees?
It's just your employees, yeah. And did you guys have any questions about the twenty-four days? No. The next item, I didn't have any attachments with the next discussion, but this was just, we found out about two additional discounts. We would like to offer employees, and I'll come to you guys first, just to make sure you guys are okay with it. But the first one is called Tickets at Work and this is a discount program. It's, it's free for employees and free for the county. It's really just a link. It's almost very similar to our current discount program. It's called Best, Best Benefits. The Tickets at Work is just, it offers more discount to more music parks, like Disney and Universal Studios. It even offers discounts for Broadway shows and Vegas shows. It's just, it's just more of a, a discount program that we would like to offer our employees and just so they could go to the website and if they're looking to go to Disney, check out the discount and you got to purchase.
Do you send out an email to this and that? Is that what you do, Janice?
Yeah, we usually do. We usually try to put ours, our newsletter, get all these discounts. But yeah, we would, we would notify the employee. And then the second discount is with Dell Computers and this was brought to our attention by Lloyd Elger. Lloyd had it when he was in Tomage and so we made contact with Dell. And again, this is free for employees. It's really for the Portage County employees and their family members. They could go to this particular Dell website and they offer up to thirty percent off on the Dell computers and accessories. So anybody could shop. You could go to this particular website and you could shop for Dell. It's directly with them, but it's just...
Now, doesn't it require as proof that you're an employee of Portage County? Do you know? I mean, what?
I know. We haven't tried that yet. I don't know if it's your email. Then it was Verizon, it's your email, just to make sure. But really, the way Dell said, they would just, we would just send out this particular link. And it's, it's Dell and it's like dell.com and Portage County's in the link. And so when you go to this link, you know, you could just...
I know that Verizon is like fifteen percent. I was quite impressed.
Yeah, yeah. It's actually nice, nice to save money. But, um, we, we just want to offer, you know, official discounts as much as we can to employees. So if we ever hear of any good discounts, we'd just like to share it.
Sure.
So if you guys are okay with that, we would like to offer that. Okay. Absolutely. In my last session, well, I'm sorry, the last item is the executive session for G1 employment. I will make a motion to go into executive session for G1, for the employment of a public employee.
Second, roll call him.
Yes, Kathleen.
Yes.
Vicki.